Okay, so if it's from an early traffic study, I apologize. It sounds like your numbers have even more trucks. So at 10:00 PM, how many trucks are leaving the facility?
With a 25 per hour average, and if you split that in half, you know, we're talking what 13?
13, so say 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM, what same question, how many trucks are leaving the facility?
I'm gonna give you the same answer because I'm just using the average across the whole day.
Okay, 12:00 PM or 12:00 AM? Same answer?
Yeah, just with an average, I mean, it fluctuates, but the the average over the day is would be about what 12 or 13 exiting? And half of that would be on Greensburg Pike, so.
Okay, using this, using this schedule, there are more vehicles entering the facility and leaving the facility during the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM? As well as between the hours of 8:00 AM and 12:00 PM, does that sound accurate?
I'm not sure I was able to follow that, and it's it's hard to reference what you're talking about, because I don't, I don't believe I have that as part of a marked exhibit.
So let's take your average of 13 trucks leaving the facility every hour. How many vehicles were we traveling down Graham Boulevard between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM?
I would use six per hour and add the number of hours you're requesting.
Okay. Okay, so 40 A trucks leaving the facility between the hours of 10:00 PM? And 6:00 AM, that's what you're saying?
If that's what the math works out to be.
I think you're an engineer, can you do the math for a second?
Can you share your screen or? We can't, he can't testify without seeing.
Okay, so you have the traffic study in front of you, how many vehicles did they say are going to be leaving the facility between the hours of 10:00 PM? And 6:00 AM, that should be a fairly easy question to answer.
Mr. McMullen, do you know which, I mean, I know you referenced the page, and do you have a date of your traffic study so that we can try to get everyone on the same, literally the same page here?
The traffic study that I have was from 2000 and the original, from the original application, it was on the Borough website.
I can, in the, in the June 2nd report, this is Alex Graziani, Borough Manager, on the June 2nd presentation made by Hillwood. Slide three of that presentation is a Churchill sort truck schedule for the average weekday trucks on the inbound outbound for both driveways. So if you want, you can find that, I'm not sure what exhibit it is in the three inch binder with over a thousand pages of exhibit. But I believe it was referred to earlier by Mr. Ferguson, so if one of you guys could help Chris see that, because if it, if you look at that between the times of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, the outbound going up Greensburg Pike, Graham Boulevard, and William Penn are enumerated on that chart.
Okay, let me grab my calculator here.
Boy, that's scary.
From 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, based on the schedule reference from Alex, I'm calculating 72?
72 trucks, okay. That's my last question, thanks.
So this was the table that was referred to, this would be slide three of the June 2nd presentation, just for other people's references, all of these files are online. And Gavin, I don't know if this is a fair comment, but for everybody's sake and interest, our expectation is that questioners aren't, aren't looking to learn about the process as much as they are to understand maybe the rationale. So in other words, with the expectation is there would be some homework done by questioners, you know, as they're coming in, because there's a lot of people who want to get through a lot of content. And to respect everybody's time, if you're not familiar with some of the aspects, I'll be sure to help you find some of those answers between meetings.
Well, in my defense, it sounded like a pretty obvious question to ask the traffic engineer.
I agree, Chris, I think, I think yours, okay. I don't disagree with that, I think in general, I just want to make sure that everybody comes prepared for everybody else's time and does their best to be prepared, but thank you, because you actually, you spotted the questions pretty easily, thanks.
Alex, can you stop sharing the screen so we can see everybody again, I'm sorry?
No problem, just, we're at a point where we're looking at doing a break here, Gavin?
Correct.
It's actually 58, I started from eight o'clock instead of 10, so it's 58.
Thanks, Mr. Prisk, all right, we're gonna go ahead, Kim, what do you think, five minutes again, or you need 10 this time? Five's, five's good, she's a trooper, all right, fantastic, we'll see, we'll see everyone at 10:05.
Mr. Rob, just before your break, how many more crossing, I mean, are all the parties done cross-examining Mr. Prisk?
Mr. Gallagher, we have four more party objectors, you have questions?
To be clear, Gavin, just to be clear, some of those have not submitted their names to begin with, there's one person, I keep on lowering their hand, they keep on raising their hand, they did not identify themselves as an objector.
Okay, so we have, we have Mr. Wilson, Mr. Yankis, who I know is the husband of Ms. Yankis, who requested, they requested party status, I believe. Ms. Ray has requested party status, Mark, I'm not, is that, is Mark the one you're talking about?
Well, if Mark could name themselves fully, it might be helpful.
All right, well, we'll, we'll use this break so Mark can hopefully work on that, and if he's a party objector, we'll give him an opportunity to ask questions, if not, you can wait until the public comment portion at the end.
Rob, Gavin, can I just note for the record that when we began, there were 115 participants, there are now 148 at 10:00 PM.
Yeah, to be clear, there's 127 of those are attendees and 21 of those are panelists.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you both, we'll take a break now, now it's 10:05 still, see you in a minute.
This week? I don't know which day.
Alex, while we're off the record, I did see, whoa, I did see that Mark did have his last name up there, I think it was Mark McDonald, he had McConnell, maybe? Or who had identified himself as a party objector early on, so if you're able to find him and put him back in the queue, I think it's appropriate, there he is, okay, great. So once, once Kim's ready, and assuming that Mr. Prisk is ready, we can go ahead and, and start with Mr. Wilson, I think, right?
Could you spell Mr. Prisk's name for me, please?
P R I S K.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Rob.
No problem, Prisk?
Hi, my name is Anthony Wilson, I'm on 828 Graham Boulevard. And I'm actually a neighbor of Chris McMullen as well. I have a couple of concerns. My primary concern is something I have not heard.
I apologize for interrupting you, but I just wanted to be clear, so this is the time for, for cross-examination questions of the witness? So if you just want, if you just want to provide testimony, that'd be another time.
No, I, no, I have a question, this is, this is leading into a question. My question is, and I haven't heard anybody address this, I've heard a lot about traffic studies, parking, et cetera. My two concerns, number one, what consideration has been taken with regards to the high school? Which is right across this Greensburg Pike from the entrance of the facility? As well as Pace School, which is a bus stop for, I believe, Wilkins, the middle school? And possibly other schools as well. What consideration has been taken into consideration with regards to children walking to and from?
We just do one question at a time, please.
Well, that's, that's the question, what, what consideration has been taken with regards to students walking in that area to and from school?
The existing intersection counts that were performed along Greensburg Pike at the Parkway off-ramp? And the proposed driveway location would have captured school bus traffic as well as other pedestrians? And those would be incorporated into our traffic study analysis.
So you would agree that with the increased amount of traffic in that area? I think it was explained that you're gonna have about six to possibly 10 trucks per hour, okay? And these are 18-wheelers, so that's, that is my concern as far as what consideration has been taken into that increased traffic? Because of children are walking from home to school. They're endangered by these trucks, so what is, what consideration has been taken as far as that's concerned?
Mr. Wilson, I think that question was answered, can, can you go ahead and move on to your next question?
My next, my other question is tied directly to what Chris McMullen had brought up as far as the amount of trucks traveling between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. What consideration has been taken into the fact that not only these, are these trucks gonna cause a nuisance? But what sort of property damage because of the extra weight that they carry back and forth in front of our homes? What consideration has been taken there?
I believe there's been some discussions during Planning Commission regarding restricting truck use on Greensburg Pike for those late night hours, not sure if it's been finalized.
So you're saying that the amount of traffic during those hours between 10 and 6 could be reduced?
Correct.
Thank you, that's all I have for now.
Thanks, Mr. Wilson.
Craig, you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and speak, please?
I have, thank you, Craig Yankis, also at 2210 William Penn Highway. Mr. Prisk, you said earlier that in your professional opinion, there will be no significant impacts to traffic. As someone whose driveway is on the eastbound side of William Penn Highway, we're in the direct path of the 185 trucks leaving to go to the Parkway westbound each day. In terms of noise levels, how often those 100 decibel truck noises will occur during the day? And traffic interference leaving and entering driveways along the truck paths? In quantitative terms, in other words, in numbers, just how badly can we be impacted before your professional opinion would call it significant?
Mr. Yankis, I think the, if I understand the objection, well, Mr. Gallagher, what's, what's your objection, I'll let you explain it.
I didn't understand what the question was, there was a lot there, but it's irrelevant and repetitive and argumentative.
I think it. I don't believe it is repetitive, because you've made the assertion that it's no significant impacts without really describing what level you would consider to be significant.
I think that's a different question, I think that's, that's a fair one to ask.
But, sorry, that's what was actually buried in what I said.
Okay, thanks.
For a traffic study, what we're required to do is to mitigate any traffic impacts at the study area intersections? If they exceed an overall increase of 10 seconds delay or more? And so the, the statement that you're referring to says, with the proposed improvements? We've addressed all those areas that required mitigation? So that there's, you know, minimal impacts at those study area intersections when you compare the level of service prior to the development? And after with the proposed improvements?
So when you say no significant impacts to traffic, there is zero consideration given to the noise along those roads?
The, the traffic study deals primarily with the operations of the study area intersections? So there's a separate study that was done regarding sound impacts.
And does the traffic study deal with impacts on people entering and leaving driveways?
If it's not a study area intersection, it would not be evaluated? So your, your specific driveway would not be incorporated into the traffic study?
Well, I wasn't looking at our driveway in particular, but the driveways along the truck pads in general, although if you wanted to study mine, I wouldn't mind it. Okay, so I just want everyone to realize here that no significant impacts to traffic is pretty narrowly defined in terms of the impacts to those of us that live along the roads.
Thank you, Mr. Yankis.
Ruthie Wright, you want to go ahead and speak, please, unmute yourself and speak, Ruthie?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, so Mr. Prisk, you said that trucks will wait on site? If they come before their scheduled times, what will the corral look like on site? I'm looking at page two of the rendering that we posted on our site, on the Churchill Girl site. And if you could explain to me, where will they be corralling when they're, when they come early? Because it shows, the rendering shows that there will be 1,800 car parking stalls? 203 trailer parking stalls and 69 loading docks? Including 16 motorcycle parking spaces, so where will the, where, I'm looking at the page, at, at the aerial view. Could you help me to understand where will they be corralled if there are more than, if, if trucks come in before they're supposed to? Where will they be on the site?
My area of expertise is primarily the intersection operations prior to the site? Along with some site circulation? But the actual truck operations and where they're on site, I would defer to our site civil engineer.
Okay, who did you say that was?
Chris Westbrook.
But you did say earlier in your testimony that the trucks will wait on site, yes?
I, I didn't speak to the timing, my understanding is that they come on site, drop off their trailer, pick up another trailer and leave. And so they're, they would not be waiting off-site on the roadway network that, that we would be analyzing? But I, I can't speak to, I, I don't believe that there's a long time in between.
You don't believe, okay, thank you, one other question, if you have been, you said you've been conservative? Or you underestimated the number of truck, the truck traffic? Would you say then that that impacts the accuracy of your study?
With a traffic study, when you're conservative? It means that the actual operations will be better than what's illustrated. So it's, it's always better to err on the side of being conservative in a traffic study, because that means you're, you're covering for the potential of higher traffic volumes.
Okay, and I wanted to go back, just, this is my last question regarding, in the traffic study, can you, were the intersections of Lewin Lane and Beulah studied?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, and what about the, the new, the new road that I think Mr. Ferguson spoke of from, on Beulah? Is there, can you explain again why, I, I may have missed it, because I had to transition home? Can you explain why it wasn't a part of the study, what was the reasoning behind that?
Which intersection are you referring to?
The, the new lane where the old, where Westinghouse will still remain? So the new road that's gonna be created entering into Beulah? From the site?
Oh, the driveway that's serving the existing portion of Westinghouse that's gonna remain?
Yes.
The traffic volumes anticipated at that driveway are, are minimal, and so the review agencies indicated that that intersection analysis wouldn't be required.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
I think there's one more, Alex? Yeah, there's one more, we have to, Mark has to get unmuted here. They keep on moving up and down, I mean, I'm sorry about that. Where'd Mark go? Okay, Mark? We can hear you.
Just let me first say, I am just totally unfamiliar with this process, some of the terms that are being used. And thank you, Mr. Prisk, for taking these questions, you've got a lot of people sitting around that table with you that somebody needs to buy your beer afterwards or whatnot, you're the only guy answering, so. So, so bear with me, so you mentioned prior traffic studies you've done for similar facilities like this, I think one of the concerns or big concern is nobody's against this facility per se, the issue, one of the issues is it's going into a residential neighborhood. Have you done any prior traffic studies in connection with an area like this, of this facility going into a residential type neighborhood?
You're asking if the other studies are in a similar neighborhood area?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. It, it appears I heard the driveway concern and Lewin Lane or whatnot? Then possibly that the typical study is studying the major intersections? Because there aren't residential areas around the, the typical facility, and that might be why these, these other residential areas are not being studied, I don't know. Well, we, we talked about, somebody was asking about I think it was McCrady Road, and we cited that the manuals, I'm not gonna be able to cite the right terms? That three or five percent or so of the traffic was designated to come off of McCrady? My interpretation of that was that was coming out of standard textbook, textbook assumptions? But there wasn't any consideration for local, local specific facts?
Can we ask a question, please?
Well, were any local specific facts considered in that assumption of the traffic coming off onto McCrady? Or was it taken out of a textbook assumption?
No, the, the distributions were developed by Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission Travel Demand Modeling? And so essentially, they looked at residential areas that would potentially work at this facility? And derived how many employees would and derived how many employees would come from different zip codes. And then we grouped different zip codes to identify which routes they would travel, traverse to get to the site. So it's very much so based on local specific data.
That sounds standardized to me, but so on the math and the trucks, I'm getting really confused. I like to try to simplify things. On the number of trucks, is it accurate to say roughly a truck would be going in or out every two minutes of the 24 hours? Twenty-five per hour is almost, you know, one every two minutes.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
And that would be 24 hours a day?
Correct.
Thank you for providing the traffic simulation, and boy, I'm not an expert in that. And that's during rush hour. When I looked at that, I didn't see any backups, not many cars on the road. I'm sure I'm not interpreting this right, but is it right to look at that, that traffic is going to be less at rush hour than it is today?
When you, when you provide additional lanes at intersections, you're providing additional capacity to move traffic through those intersections more efficiently. And so the proposed conditions, you know, in some areas are going to be better than what you experienced today. In other areas, it would be similar to what you experienced today.
Obviously, accounting for everything coming out of the new facility.
Correct, that simulation was the build condition with the new facility.
Okay. As far as the number of workers, I'm confused on that math, too. How many approximate workers will be working in this facility?
I think the number that the Amazon representative provided would be 1,000 to 1,500 jobs.
Okay, so let's call it 1,250. Do we know how that gets split by shift? Assume that's 24 hours, three shifts, or?
There's two shifts that they operate for this facility.
Would those workers be split evenly between those two shifts?
I don't think it's a direct even split, but it could be close.
Do we know when the shift would be changing?
The shift changes a little bit before your normal AM commuter time and a little bit after your normal PM commuter time.
So 6:00 AM or so, or 7:00 PM, what we said?
Yeah, 6:30, then maybe like 6:00 PM.
Do we know if these, I presumably can, but these workers presumably can leave for lunch as well, or leave mid-shift for to get something to eat?
I can't speak to the the operations of, you know, lunch schedules and things like that.
Okay, so, all right, so just so I understand, at each shift change, let's call it 1,200, make the math easy. There will be, am I getting this right, 600 cars going in and 600 cars going out?
The study used about a little bit more than 600 total, closer to maybe 700 total in the AM and in the PM. So it's not 600 in and out, it's about 700 total during those peak hours.
All right, well, help me understand the math. We've got 1,200 workers, roughly 600 per shift?
Mr. Prisk testified that he does not know the operational, the specific operational figure, so I think he's already said he's ballparking that.
Well, that's fair, yeah, I understand that, but this is traffic, so we're trying to figure out how many cars are going in and out if there are. His number is way off of my assumption, which could be wrong. If I've got 600 workers on each shift, every 12 hours, I've got 600 cars going in or out, or 1,200 during that shift change. And I could be totally wrong, but.
But they purposely stagger the inbound and outbound so that they don't completely overlap on top of each other.
So it's not two 12 hours then, so. All right, so we, I don't know, within an hour, we've got 1,200 cars or whatnot. If we, I think I know the answer, but, and maybe it was touched upon, but all that worker traffic, we've got 600 plus 600, say, within a two-hour timeframe, is going to be presumably looking for alternative routes, whether it's down Beulah, whether it's down Churchill and down Nottingham. Has that been considered at all in the traffic study?
The traffic study provided the routing of trips through the intersections based on the distributions that SPC provided.
Okay.
So it didn't account for potential detours of miscellaneous congestion on other roads.
All right, so that's, that may be an unknown, so. And again, back to them leaving during the day, that's, that would be all 1,200 will leave, but mid-shift, 700, 800 cars may be coming out, in and out during that hour lunch break. The last comment is just an observation. I don't, again, understand this process. And maybe it's not the right time, but I am struck by the lack of questions from council, the seemingly lack of engagement. I've seen a council person on the Zoom meeting here missing for almost an hour.
Mr. McDonald, if I could, we have really, we want to try to get everyone's questions in, and we're trying to be respectful of everybody's time. Council has been advised to hold off on their questions until the rest of the folks are done. So if you have any other questions, feel free to ask, otherwise we need to move on.
Well, thank you for saying that. One reason why I said that I thought I heard you ask Gavin if council had any questions, and maybe I misheard that. So I would request a lot of engagement from council, thank you.
Sure.
Ada, if you would please unmute yourself and speak, thank you.
If there was a way to get the folks just to come to Old Beulah Road, which is practically the entrance to the Westing, the former Westinghouse facility, and see the area that they want to close, the upper part of Old Beulah Road and the lower part. If you try to close the upper part, it is so dangerous to make people go down to the lower part. You almost get yourself killed trying to get onto Beulah Road to get out there. I would just like to, I would like to be part of that simulation, to go with you to see, for you to see how it is to get onto Beulah Road from Old Beulah Road there. It would take you just, it's practically at the entrance to what you're trying to go into there. I'd like to know who made that to try to close the upper part of Old Beulah Road. And so is there, is there a way to petition to have that reviewed? I'd like to be part of that.
Ms. Ezecoy, we certainly appreciate your comments, however, this is the time for cross-examination questions of Mr. Prisk, the traffic engineer. So I think your comments may be more appropriate for when it's your turn to put on your case about this matter.
Well, I want to petition that decision, and I'd like to be part of that simulation. As a 35-year resident of that street, I want to be part of that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ezecoy. Alex, I think that's the last, the last party objector we have. We will, of course, give an opportunity for redirect to the applicant. If you do have some questions that we want to continue plowing through tonight, or what are we thinking?
Oh, that's interesting. You're correct, there's no other individuals with their hands up. You know, we've really told people we would stop at 11:00. I guess it would be, Leif would have to call another witness to get started, or did you want to see if others in our group would have questions of Chris to try to get some of that, but I don't want to go beyond 11:00. We're obviously looking at a multi-day hearing, and it wouldn't benefit anybody to go beyond 11:00 PM.
Mr. Rob, we do have a small number of questions for Mr. Prisk on redirect, and perhaps we could go into recess after we go through those. I think that's fine. You know what, if we could hold on a moment, I know Mr. Ferguson has contacted me and said he's lost his connection to the meeting. So if you could just kind of bear with us for a minute or two here to see if we can get him back online. I apologize.
In case this happens to others, at the Borough's website, there is prominently focused on the right-hand side a Zoom webinar link to join in. And I've got to see as he comes in to make sure I get him promoted over to, from an attendee to a participator. And for those who don't have their microphones muted, you may want to consider doing that while we wait here momentarily to find him. Gavin, while you're unmuted, are you able, you could, to call him to find out what's going on? That way, we can get a better idea of what's his technical issue.
He said he just lost connection. He sent me an email, it's copied Mr. Gallagher, and I advised him to retry on the Borough website, and he says he's back now.
Oh, excellent. Let me see if I can find him. One moment, please, I apologize. There he is. Looks like he's been promoted. Somebody got to him quicker than I did.
Thank you. I can't explain why I got dropped there, and I regret that anybody stopped because of that. Next time, I'll just waive my right to be present. You can continue.
Well, we wanted to be fair to everybody, Mr. Ferguson, so.
You always have been, thank you very much.
We have not started redirect, but Mr. Metz, I believe, does have a few questions for Mr. Prisk, so let's keep on rolling.
Okay, sorry for the delay.
Thank you. So, Mr. Prisk, some questions were asked about the right-of-way for the traffic improvements. And so what you were talking about tonight was the traffic impact study. So is a traffic impact study conceptual in nature, or does it involve a surveyed meets and bounds legal description of all of the right-of-way impacts?
Conceptual in nature.
And will a detailed design be done later that indicates the meets and bounds of the right-of-way needed?
Yes.
And will that be subject to review and approval by PennDOT and the Borough?
Yes, it will.
And even though the detailed design comes later, in your traffic study, did you nonetheless include some preliminary right-of-way information?
Yes.
And having that information, did the county and Gateway on behalf of the Borough and PennDOT subject to review of intervener comments? Did they all approve your traffic study with that right-of-way information?
Yes, they did.
Thank you. And then one other topic. Mr. Ferguson was providing some information about other Amazon sort facilities in the country and suggesting that you could have used traffic information from those other facilities as part of the traffic study here. And at the time that you were doing the scoping of the traffic study with the review agencies, at that time, were there any other sort facilities of this specific generation that this project would be that were in operation from which you could have pulled actual traffic data?
No, there was not.
And does that explain why PennDOT and the Borough asked, instead of using Amazon's projected traffic, that you instead use traffic data from the ITE manual?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rob, that's all the questions that we have for Mr. Prisk on redirect.
All right, of course, we all know how this works, or I think at least the lawyers do. If there's any recross examination on that very, very limited scope that Mr. Metz just asked questions about, we can entertain those questions. Mr. Ferguson, do you have anything additional?
Yes, please. So, Mr. Prisk, when I asked you several questions about similar facilities from which you might have obtained actual useful traffic information, I mean, I asked that question so frequently that, I mean, I was asked to just move on because it seemed to be so abundantly clear that you had no information at all of any similar facilities that you could have looked at. How is it that you are now completely certain and asking, and answering Mr. Metz's question that there were no other similar sort facilities? What changed from my questioning to Mr. Metz's question?
I thought I stated to you that there wasn't a facility of this type that we could have counted that was in operation.
Okay, we'll leave it at that. I understood that I was to discontinue asking those questions because you seem to know absolutely nothing about any other existing Amazon facilities. Did I misunderstand that? You actually do have, you actually knew about other Amazon facilities and whether or not they were similar to this one.
I thought I stated to you that there were no facilities of this type in operation that we could have counted.
Okay, we'll leave it at that.
Do you have anything further, Mr. Ferguson?
No, thank you.
Are there any other recross on the very limited scope of the redirect from any other party objectors? Okay, seeing none, you know, I do know that there's the possibility that the witnesses, once they're, you know, once they've completed their testimony, may not be available for future hearings. We just don't know because those future hearings haven't all been planned. So I would suggest if there are council members who have questions for Mr. Prisk, I mean, obviously, there will be a subsequent testimony from the Borough Traffic Engineers and others that may answer your questions. But while you have Mr. Prisk on the hot seat, for lack of a better term, do any council members have questions? And you could take a minute. And you could take a, take a minute.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Prisk, this is Kevin Collins, council member. Um, on your simulation, you show changes to the eastbound on-ramp and off-ramp onto 376 by Holland Road. Are you anticipating that there'll be reconstruction of that intersection?
I'm just pulling up a map to make sure I'm referencing properly. There are no proposed changes at the Churchill, Holland, uh, Parkway on-off ramp intersection.
And I think you're, you're saying that in, in your simulation, no truck traffic will be going on to Churchill Road off of Beulah Road to enter those, and to enter that intersection on that on-ramp going eastbound. Is that right?
Correct. Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Prisk, this is, uh, Councilman Matt Castilla. There was some back and forth and it got a little bit confusing, but just to help clarify here, with the traffic data, um, you, you use the word conservative, I guess. Does that mean that there was more trips required by the, um, what is it? I I C E or I T E, uh, requirements than what Amazon originally had proposed? Or, or the, um, you know, per person, the property owner proposed?
Correct. The traffic schedule that the client provided indicated lower traffic volumes. The I T E method that we initially proposed was higher. And then the I T E method that the Borough and PennDOT required us to use was even higher than that.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Prisk, this is, uh, Jay Dorn. So there was some back and forth with one of the objectors in, with respect to something called the peak season versus peak hour and what the traffic would look like. And in particular, I think you were talking around kind of Thanksgiving till through December. You said that that wasn't included in the simulation, but that you had them provided, uh, if I'm correct, that information, uh, from Amazon, from the end user. But that that wasn't something that was specifically asked for. Are you prepared to provide that, uh, to councils that were able to review that, those numbers during that peaks, that peak up kind of month or two weeks, as you call it?
The, the duration isn't a, a month.
I think two weeks is what you had said.
Yeah, but it's not, uh, back-to-back two weeks. Uh, and essentially it was kind of adding a, a factor on top of the schedule that was provided, uh, to us, a percentage to increase. So I would, I would defer if, I mean, the, the study's been approved and that wasn't a requirement of it.
I, I understand it was a requirement. My question was, was are you willing to, to provide that to council as part of our review?
Yes, I guess.
Thank you.
Any other council members have questions for Mr. Prisk?
Uh, I have a question. Adam McDowell, member of council. Mr. Prisk, you, you mentioned about the traffic coming out of the site. Uh, you mentioned on Greensburg Pike, I believe, 60% would go on that side. And of that, it would go both inbound toward Pittsburgh and eastbound outside the city. Um, i- is the plan for the traffic coming out of the site sort, so when trucks come out on to Greensburg Pike, they may be going either inbound or outbound on the Parkway? And the same for the other side, or will the trucks have a designated site they're coming out of? Based on the direction of going?
The 60-40 split is where we're projecting their coming from and going to. And then if you're coming from the city, you would use the direct off-ramp connection, go directly to that local road and then go to the site. If you're leaving to head back towards the city, you would either exit on the Greensburg Pike, head up to Graham, to William Penn to get on, or exit on to Beulah, turn left, turn left on to William Penn to get on. If you're coming from, uh, the east, uh, you would get off in, turn left on to Beulah and then enter the site. And then you'd leave, uh, that same orientation.
Thank you.
I have a question on Norma Greco Council. Has PennDOT, is PennDOT, uh, has PennDOT approved, um, or not approved? I'm a little unsure of what your answer was for that.
The, the PennDOT letter indicates that they have no further comments on the traffic study and that all their comments and subsequent borough comments and Allegheny comments have been addressed. And so they're not going to provide any more comments on the study. I think for their records, they would like to see what the intervenor comments are.
So the comments, they, the four, the four, four pages that are, um, of comments they have for you, you don't have to answer those, or what happens to those questions?
Those will be addressed during the design portion. So when we work on those detailed design plans, we'll incorporate those comments.
Okay.
So this is Jay Dorn again. Um, one of the concerns that I think we've heard from a number of the objectors is not just the trucks, but obviously the, the employee traffic. I'm not sure if I, if I saw, so you can just kind of help me quickly. What consideration was given to public transportation in, in the modeling? And has there been conversations, uh, to address that in order to alleviate some of the, uh, the employee traffic?
There was a very minimal mode split that was agreed upon during the scoping portion, uh, which the review agencies allotted for a 1% reduction of anticipated employee traffic to use transit. The, the end user has seen nationwide where they're getting closer to 19% of a mode split use. So, you know, again, this would, would be conservative, to use that term again, where they, you know, didn't reduce the amount of vehicular cars, uh, to what would be using other modes of transportation. Uh, we anticipate that there'll be higher, uh, transit use specifically.
And anything, uh, further from council members?
Mr. Prisk, I, I have one question. Uh, there was some concern.
Can you hear the mayor? Are you able to hear him?
Yes.
Yeah, we can.
There, there was concern about the, um, the entrance to the Westinghouse, uh, facility that's down there now. And it would be a separate road off of, uh, Beulah Road. Uh, has there been any consideration of, of using the, uh, which would be the existing entrance to the site that the Westinghouse employees would to continue to use? It would alleviate having to build a separate road further down Beulah?
It is my understanding that the end user wants to keep access separate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, are there any additional, uh, questions from council members? Uh, this does seem like a, a, a pretty good stopping point, um, since it appears we're done with Mr. Prisk. So, I don't know, Mr. Metz, do you have any other, uh, any issue with that? Do you think this is a good time to call it quits for tonight?
I agree. That sounds good, Mr. Rob.
Okay, great. Alex, anything, uh, else? We do want to, you know, I, I know the council members were, uh, had discussed publicly, uh, the potential for a second, uh, hearing date. We, we are pretty sure we're going to need one. There's very little question about it now, is there? I know that, uh, council members were available, I think, on Thursday, uh, this coming Thursday, which is the 22nd at 6:00 p.m. Mr. Dorn, is that still, uh, council's desire to, uh, recess this hearing until that specific date and time?
That is the case.
Uh, Mr. Ferguson, uh, you know, like I said, I, I, it did not sound like you had been aware. I believe Mr. Metz's group had been aware of this, uh, of this second hearing date. The third hearing date, um, is again to be determined. But I believe, uh, Mr. Dorn or Alex can correct me if I'm wrong, but tentatively, uh, Monday, the 26th has been discussed. Uh, and, and it's, we're almost certain you would need a, a, another hearing date after that, but I think that's a tentative third day. Is that correct?
So, yes, in, in fairness, um, outside of a public meeting when, uh, when you and Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Metz and I spoke, uh, Mr. Solicitor, you, you did mention that council was looking at Thursday, the 26th as a tentative date. So I, I'm not suggesting that I'm, I'm sorry?
The 22nd, Thursday, the 22nd.
Thank you. Thank you. So, um, here's a few things perhaps I just ask, uh, council to, to, to take, bear in mind. So first of all, as far as my case is concerned, I, I have one essential expert witness who's in Colorado. Stephen Victor, land use planner, landscape architect. He will be back on August 2nd and will be available after that. I have a second sound expert, William, and he will be back. He, he will be available remotely on August 5th. So either way, I'm not suggesting a hearing can't occur in between that date, but I have two witnesses, which we might not even get to, quite honestly, in the next hearing. But I'd like to do that the first week of August to assure their availability. I think that, so, you know, we, we've lost 18 people on this call now. We were, we had 148 at 10 o'clock. We have 130 now. So, you know, I think that doing 10 hours of hearings in one week for this very large group of families is, is very burdensome. Uh, I, I think it has a, a chilling and a suppressive effect on community participation. And, and hopefully Hillwood, you know, who wishes to demonstrate, uh, that they want to be good neighbors and will not insist upon, you know, uh, too unreasonable a hearing schedule for families like this. Um, I, I don't think there should be any more than one five-hour hearing in a given week. Uh, and I've, I've tried to initiate measures, um, you know, with the Solicitor and opposing council to, to streamline my presentation. And, and I think you've seen that I've done so to the extent that I can. And so I'm looking for some, some reciprocal, uh, courtesy here. There, there aren't any dates that are really locked in now because in any next hearing date could be announced at this meeting, uh, without re-advertising. And, uh, all, all of the prior proceedings before the planning commission, which has gone over for a very, very long period of time, have occurred at intervals and at a pace that's been requested by Hillwood, we, we just ask for a similar courtesy. And, uh, and, and the other thing is, I, I know that some of my experts have been trying to watch tonight, but it's, it's really hard to get your experts, uh, you know, to not know at least generally what day they would be expected to testify on. So, you know, that, that would, and, and I guess finally I should say that, you know, uh, if we could, if we do have some of these later hearings, we, we just respectfully ask council, again, to try to hold these hearings, um, in, uh, in, in person where possible.
So, so Frank, Mr. Ferguson, I appreciate your comments. And frankly, I, I do, I do take issue with the fact that you would, uh, imply or directly state that this council has done something besides trying to make this, uh, trying to accommodate as many of its residents to attend and provide testimony and listen in as they have been doing now for, I don't know, roughly nine to 10 months. And we have gotten literally even tonight, as you pointed out, well over 100 residents who were able to participate, follow along and be part of this public hearing. So the Borough will continue to endeavor to accommodate all individuals, including inviting those folks who cannot attend due to a technical difficulty to the Borough building so that they can be, have a full and meaningful participation in this hearing. As you pointed out, and as we had discussed, you knew the second date was, at least for, at least a week now, I think, that the second day was going to be Thursday. Uh, the fact that you're witnesses, uh, and I'm not sure why they can't participate remotely. Uh, but the fact that there, it's not convenient for them to attend, uh, next Monday and you'd rather have, not, not have two, uh, hearings in a week. Frankly, I mean, uh, we, we certainly appreciate that sentiment. But we have a lot of people's schedules that we're trying to coordinate with. And this is, uh, as you said, a very important, uh, hearing and a very important matter that the council wants to hear from all of its folks and wants to give everyone their due process. And I think they're doing a really good job about that, if, if I do say so myself. So with, with respect, uh, I think we are set for the Thursday hearing. We can continue to have discussions and, and I, let me suggest that we potentially have some of those discussions among council, including, uh, Mr. Metz and Mr. Gallagher, to see if we can work out another date that, you know, works for our Borough Council in addition to trying to accommodate your witnesses, which we certainly want to try to do. So I do, I want to be clear, we want full participation, including from your expert witnesses. We just have to make sure everybody's schedules work. But I think it's safe to say that we are officially announcing the second date is going to be Thursday at 6:00, following the same link, the same format. And we will move on, uh, we will start with the applicant's second witness and proceed, uh, hopefully in slightly more efficient fashion. But if not, um, you know, we'll, we'll move as quickly as we can while giving everyone an opportunity to say their piece and ask their questions.
All right. I, I, I cannot let that go unresponded.
Please.
I am only, everything that I said, addressed scheduling. I think that Mr. Graziani, I think that you, I think that Borough Council, uh, a- anybody who has heard me speak about this proceeding has bent over backwards and has done everything within your power to give the community an opportunity to be heard. And we're talking about, you know, the format. And when people do come to the meetings, I think Alex bends over backward to find people who want to speak and to let them feel comfortable doing so. That response to me was completely unnecessary because I was only addressing the, the burden on families of spending 10 hours, um, in one week in, in a hearing. And I, and those of us who do this for a living, we're used to it. But we have literally over 100 people who don't do this for a living. And it's a worthy consideration to ask if that might be burdensome on them. I was trying to speak up on their behalf. But there's no way you can construe that to me, for me to suggest that the way every meeting has been handled has not been fair and, and has certainly given everybody who was able to attend the opportunity to speak. So, um, I'd like to just sort of, I, I'm just intending to just narrow the focus of what my comments were, um, to, uh, you know, we can hold these at a reasonable pace. And I'm just raising the subject about what that is.
May, maybe I missed, RJ, I thought that you said that you were, uh, requesting an in-person hearing after all of that. Uh, when in fact, you know, that's, that's a big part of the, the work that council has been doing is to ensure that all folks are going to be able to participate meaningfully while also protecting the public health as, as more, uh, probably better described by Mr. Dorn during the last, uh, Borough Council meeting as to, uh, a description of their concerns, especially in light of the ongoing pandemic. So, uh, certainly, let's, let's leave it as, you know, it's a late, it's late now. It's 11:00. I promised Kim that, uh, we would have her out of here, so her, she's going to turn into a pumpkin here. Uh, but, uh, we will continue to try to work with all parties to schedule hearings. We do have council members who are our primary concern, uh, in their schedules. Uh, but certainly we, we appreciate the points that you've raised, Mr. Ferguson, and we will continue those discussions.
Okay. Thank you.
Gavin, for convenience sake, there'll be the same link that we used for tonight's meeting. So at 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, the 22nd of July, this meeting will, or this hearing will reconvene. Um, if anyone has issues or concerns, again, I've given my contact information, um, you know, to accommodate those as best as possible. The video of tonight's meeting will be available, um, on Facebook immediately, but on YouTube, uh, likely by Wednesday because it takes a long time to upload such a large video. I should, I would be remiss to not mention, we did have about 12 or 13, depending on time, of people streaming it live on Facebook. So not only in addition to the people who were participating via the Zoom webinar format as participants and attendees, we had people streaming it live on Facebook. So just another way to try to get that out. So for people who weren't able to make it tonight, um, hopefully they'll be able to see the video and, and maybe get caught up and join us on Thursday.
Thanks, Alex. Uh, Mr. Metz, Mr. Gallagher, anything else from you before we, uh, call it a night?
No, we're all set. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We'll see everyone Thursday. We are recessed.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you all.